Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. Today is July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three at approximately four P. M. And I would like to call this meeting to order. Before calling this, before we have our roll call from our city clerk, I would ask that we all would stand and as we stand, we take a moment of silence for all that have suffered during our recent tornado disasters as we take our moment of silence of prayer. Thank you. We do send our deepest thank yous to all of our state and federal partners and agencies that have stepped in to help out. And our prayers are with all affected by the recent tornado that many have suffered in Nash and Edgecombe County. And we know that as a community, we're always resilient, always persevere through all of our issues and problems. And so we know that we will bounce back for this. But while we are, please be sensitive to people that were affected by the tornado and continue to make sure that we keep them in our prayers. Madam Clerk, at this time, we have our roll call.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
T. J. Walker.
Here.
Doltrich.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Jaboris Walker.
We have a quorum. Item number four on our agenda, consideration of the minutes of the following regular scheduled committee of the whole meeting, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item four, two, is Livewell Update, April third, two thousand and twenty-three. Do consideration of the minutes of a regular scheduled city council meeting held April second, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes? Second. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, second by Councilman Doltrich. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by ah.
Ah.
Any opposed, like son? Motion carries. Item five is any consideration of additions or deletions to this agenda? Are there any considerations of additions or deletions at this time?
Yes, could we add business to Down East Viking Classic, please?
That is new business of the Down East Viking Classic. Is that in our, is that a gen item or a closed session?
Gen item, no closed session.
So item number, that won't be on the consent agenda, right? Or do you want it on the consent?
No.
So that would be item nine, item nine-one. All in favor of adding this item?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Council question?
More specific, Councilman Knight, about adding that specifically? What are you, we're gonna talk about?
You want me to, to discuss it now?
No, I don't want this, just to, I mean, I know it's.
Just in reference to the funding.
Okay, funding, thank.
Any other questions? All in favor of adding item nine-one, Down East Viking Funding as new business to the agenda? Let it be known, well, first of all, was there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying ah.
Ah.
All opposed, like son? Motion carries, item nine-one will be new business Down East Viking Funding. At this time, I would now turn our meeting over to our city manager, Mr. Keith Rogers, Jr., for his update.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. So good evening, everyone. First, I would like to start this evening by thanking all of the employees from the various city departments for their rapid and effective response to last week's tornado that moved through our northern part of Rocky Mount. Staff from our fire department, our police department, our energy resources, our public works department, and our development services quickly provided assistance, including restoring power in areas that were damaged. So the city continues and stands prepared to assist our partners at Pfizer as well as our surrounding jurisdictions with the long-term recovery efforts. Also, to our residents in our community, if your home has sustained damage from the tornado, the city may be able to help. So we have multiple housing repair programs, and we will expedite review for applicants impacted by last week's weather. So for more information about our housing assistance, please contact Alvina Jenkins and our community development department. That number is two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-one-zero-zero. The city also has utility assistance program available for customers that may be experiencing hardships. And for more information on that program, please contact our customer service department at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-two-five-zero. Today, our finance department was awarded the GFOA recognition for the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement Award. And this is for our F Y twenty-two audit report. This award was created to recognize governments that go above the minimum requirements generally accepted accounting principles in preparing their annual comprehensive financial reports. And it is evidence of a spirit of transparency as well as full disclosure. So this is a significant accomplishment and a positive sign for the city's financial operations. So I wanted to commend our finance team for their great work in receiving this award again this year. This weekend, the North Carolina Black Collected Municipal Officials will hold their summer conference at the Rocky Mount Event Center. And so this is an excellent opportunity for officials from around the state to see all of the positive things that Rocky Mount has to offer. We also have multiple staff members that will be featured on different panels throughout the weekend that will be sharing their expertise on various topics from public safety to affordable housing to economic development. Our National Night Out is coming up on Tuesday, August the first. So residents are invited to join us at the Helen P. Gay Rocky Mount Historic Train Station from six to eight P. M. on August first. And this is an annual event that seeks to enhance our relationship between the community and our police department. There will be free food, a D. J., inflatable play area for the children, and other fun activities. Our police department is also doing their backpack giveaway that will be held on Wednesday, August the ninth, at six P. M. at the Rocky Mount Sports Complex at six hundred Independence Drive. So we thank everyone for their generous donations to that backpack giveaway, and we look forward to this year's program being a continued success. Downtown Live is back at the Imperial Center for the month of August. The main event band will provide music on August the third, and on August seventeenth, the featured band will be Silk Groove Review. And finally, Spider-Man: No Way Home will be featured at the next Lawn Chair Theater, and that's on Friday, August the eleventh. And the movie will begin airing at dusk, and this is a free event. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I hope that we all govern ourselves accordingly to updates. Yes, sir, Councilman Walker?
So I wanted to say thank you to city manager, the fire chief, police chief, city staff who responded quick Thursday, and to be a resident for that tornado to hit my backyard and not tear my house up is a blessing. So it teach you that life alone don't send warning shots. But what you do when you, the way the community addressed that, the way we came together and we helped each other. And I want to thank Sheriff Stone, Representative Chesil for being boots on the ground, everybody from this community, the way Chief, your people responded to stop the lights, the way you went out and checked on residents to make sure they were in place. It was just a beautiful thing. But it teach you, like I said, it was a blessing to come home and see home the same way you left home for it to be there in that moment. And I got a neighbor that's a Vietnam vet that has a hearing aid, and he said when it came through, it felt like a thousand trains was coming through his back door. So, um, I'm just blessed in the moment. And I thank the whole area, Nash, Edgecombe County, the city of Rocky Mount, for the way we responded. We came together, and I'm just honored, and we blessed for that. But I just want to say thank you for everything. And city manager, thank you for being right on it. And all my colleagues too, who also checked on me and made sure that we were good. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, and just thank you. And that's what it's all about, coming together and working together. It's a beautiful thing. And in the midst of, some people left home that morning, and they came home, it was no home. But to see how this community has come together to make sure that they do have, it's a blessing alone. So I just want to say thank you for everything.
Thank you, Councilman Walker, Councilman Joyner.
Yes, I also want to thank everyone for Battleboro got hit extremely hard. And definitely want to thank O. I. C. for sending their trailers over so that people would have storage space. I also want to thank Sheriff Cle Atkins and Edgecombe County Commissioners for meeting the needs of the people in that Battleboro area. Like I said, you don't know what the next day will bring, but you know what you ought to do today. So thank you for being there. Thank you, Councilman Walker.
Thank you, Councilman Joyner. Any, Councilman Harris?
I also wanted to extend a deep gratitude of thanks for all of the city and county representatives and those who really took upon themselves to clear I ninety-five. We had Rory Cooper, Governor Rory Cooper, with us yesterday. And he indicated in his brief inaugural meeting that I ninety-five was cleared in two and one-half hours. And there are a lot of people who need to be thanked for clearing I ninety-five in such a quick manner. D. O. T., Nash County citizens of Rocky Mount, personnel of the city of Rocky Mount. As Councilman Walker and Joyner said, it takes everybody working together. And we visibly saw some of the damage yesterday. Hopefully, Governor Cooper will go back to Raleigh, get with his people. We need financial support to come. We have many inhabitants who didn't have proper insurance on their homes. We need financial help, and I'm hoping that we can get that from Raleigh as quickly as possible. But last, we owe Pfizer a deep, deep gratitude for the commitment that they have made. The governor again told us yesterday, they will pay all employees. Not only that, they will pay all contractors, provided those contractors will in turn pay their own employees. So that is a big commitment on their part, and it shows how this plan is vital to the operations of Pfizer nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Uh, we do need more storage units. There have been people that have loaned out their tractor trailer units. But we do need more storage units for those families that trying to clean their homes out and store their stuff until demolition is done, that they may move back in. So if anybody have any knowledge or whereabouts of some units that we can take out to people's homes, please get in touch with us. We'd love to come and get them.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we're now moving on to item number seven, presentations and recognitions. Consideration of resolution recognizing and honoring the heroic efforts of employees of the Energy Resources, Fire and Police Departments in saving the life of a fellow employee. A recommended action is to adopt resolution and presentation of Electric Cities resolutions to Energy Resources employees by Andy Fusco, who's the chief strategy officer for Electric Cities. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Walker, Councilman Doltrich. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying ah.
Ah.
All opposed, like son? Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to read our city resolution. As a matter of fact, Mr. Fusco, you're already up. If you could come, you have to go to, yep, opposite direction there. If you could come and read the resolution from Electric Cities, and I will follow you with our city resolution.
Very good, thank you for the opportunity. Just really quickly, as you may be aware, Electric Cities provides a number of services to our member cities, Rocky Mount being one of them. One thing in this particular situation, we'd like to kind of point out is that your employees here went through our lineman training program, and so that is why our board of directors approved this resolution. So I'll read the resolution honoring these four gentlemen. And this was approved by Electric Cities Board of Directors. A resolution honoring Spencer Leonard, James Turner, Thomas Godley, and Joshua Nun in recognition of their heroic efforts to save the life of a fellow Rocky Mount, North Carolina municipal employee. Whereas the four gentlemen worked in the public power community of Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and whereas they displayed heroic efforts on Friday, June second, two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas they took immediate and exhaustive action in an effort to save the life of a fellow municipal employee, assisting in removing the colleague from a trench, administering CPR, utilizing an automatic external defibrillator to restore the colleague's heartbeat until emergency medical personnel arrived. And whereas they took selfless actions to help save the life of a fellow municipal employee, with those immediate actions contributing to a speedy recovery, now therefore be it resolved that Electric Cities of North Carolina Incorporated does hereby recognize, honor, and thank the four gentlemen for their heroic efforts, service, and leadership to the public power community of Rocky Mount, adopted this twenty-fourth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Gentlemen, don't go too far. Don't, don't go too far, gentlemen, we've got one more. City of Rocky Mount Resolution reads, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Rocky Mount recognizing and honoring the heroic efforts of the employees of the Energy Resources, Fire, and Police Departments in saving the life of a fellow employee. Whereas on Friday, the second day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, apprentice lineman Jonathan Ballard was seriously injured and rendered unconscious when he came in contact with an energized electric line while working in a mud hole approximately fifty-four inches deep to help restore power to a residence at nineteen fifty-five Vance Street. And whereas, after de-energizing the line, fellow Energy Resources Department employee Spencer Leonard, James Turner, and Joshua Nun, and first-class contract lineman Thomas Godley, began working to get Jonathan out of the mud hole, which has made more difficult because Jonathan had sunk about a foot into the mud. And whereas, the Energy Resources employees pulled Jonathan out of the hole using a rope around his body, started administering CPR and mouth-to-mouth, called nine-one-one, and put an A. E. D. on his chest, and had one successful defibrillation. And whereas, at this point, Fire Department employees from Battalion One, Rescue One, Ladder Twenty-two, and S. T. O. One arrived on the scene and found that Jonathan had no pulse. And whereas, Police Department employees arrived on the scene and also provided assistance. And whereas, the Fire Department employees, after determining there was no pulse, began CPR and applied their A. E. D. and began assisting with ventilation via bag masks, performed one successful defibrillation, and achieved the return of spontaneous circulation. And whereas, Edgecombe County EMS arrived on the scene, and patient care was transferred to them for continued care and transport to U. N. C. Nash Healthcare. And whereas, the heroic actions undertaken without delay by Energy Resources employees as soon as they realized Jonathan Ballard had come in contact with the energized line, and the follow-up actions taken by the Fire Department team and the Police Department saved his life. And the city council wishes to recognize and honor the city employees who worked together to accomplish this result. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Rocky Mount that it recognizes, honors, and expresses heartfelt thanks to Spencer Leonard, James Turner, and Joshua Nun from Energy Resources, first-class contract lineman Thomas Godley, and the employees of the Fire Department and Police Department for the heroic action they took on the second day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, to save the life of their fellow employee Jonathan Ballard, adopted this twenty-fourth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three. Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you again, and thank you for such heroic efforts. And we pray that we never have to experience anything like that. But it's good to know that you have people around you that care about you in times like that, that just won't leave you out to dry. So I appreciate you, fellas, for your heroic efforts again. Item number eight at this time are our petitions to be received from the public. Please note that everyone has to complete a citizen sign-in sheet and provide a security officer prior to the start of the meeting. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. The city council values all citizen input. This is an important opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments or may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. The city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a sign-in sheet. Address comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. Again, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt, but in our previous presentation with the heroics of our Energy Department, I didn't realize out in the audience, we have the mother of Jonathan Ballard out there. And I think it would be appropriate to recognize her and her son for, for working here at the city of Rocky Mount and all that he's done. And I would just, would appreciate if we could allow her just to stand up and we can give our appreciation.
That'll be fine if she doesn't mind, Ms. Ballard. Thank you so much. I did not know you were here. If you have any comments, please come to the mic.
Thank you. Um, I just, I'm Tara Ballard. I am Jonathan Ballard's mother, and I just want to say on behalf of my husband and I, Chris, that we are thankful that you took the time to honor these fine young men. They did not have to step up and do what they did. I'm sure it was a terrifying situation in the heat of the moment. But they went above and beyond what they were trained to do in case of an emergency, but it takes a lot of courage. And I just appreciate y'all honoring them, and thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I didn't realize we had the whole, I think the family here with the Police Department and the Energy Department.
Oh, yeah.
That's amazing.
It's family, family, thank you all. Have a great one. Thank you, Councilman Doltrich, for bringing that to my attention and awareness. Our first public petition will come from Ms. Kathy Hall.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and lady. I want to speak on a positive note today instead of negative, since I'm sure you're all tired of hearing it month after month. My family and I love living in Rocky Mount. Know it's not a perfect place, but no place is, and compared to other places in our country and in our world, I think we're pretty darn lucky. All of you councilmen up here, as far as I'm concerned, you're all very sharp-dressed men. I assume financially, you're all fine and can pay your bills every month and live a nice life. Sadly, that is not the case for a lot of our citizens here in Rocky Mount. When I ran for school board, I knocked on over a thousand doors, yes, in the heat, by myself, in my district, which was seven. I went to areas I was told not to go. A lot of people I met were so nice, but my heart sank when I left their house, as the living conditions are very poor to deplorable. I've never seen anything like it. One day in late October, it was very cold and rainy that day. A woman in about her forties let me in her house and talked to me at length for a half an hour. She had no electric heat or any food in that house, and I remember her to this day. Two weeks ago, after I dropped my kids off at Rocky Mount Middle for summer school, I saw a lady with two legs and one foot pushing the Piggly Wiggly cart up from the Piggly Wiggly up Sunset, there are a couple streets out from the middle school. Sixty-one-year-old woman. She walked quite a ways in the heat. I stopped and asked her if she wanted a ride. She said yes. I took her groceries out of her Piggly Wiggly cart, we left it there on the corner. I took her for her coffee and cigarettes, and then I took her home. I took her supper that night and a cake the next night. This woman has no electric, the sixty-one-year-old woman has no electric in her house, and in this heat, that's a crime. She owes around four hundred dollars on her electric bill. We must help these people. They are all of your constituents. I say, let's take some bad lemons and make lemonade. I propose that once a month, a family in need receives a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar credit on their electric bill and a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar gift card for, let's say, Piggly Wiggly or the Food Lion. We let the council members from that ward drive through their ward one day a month and be like an Ed McMahon, and show up with some money and some food. Now, this would be one family per month. We start with Ward One, so one month is just one family in the City of Rocky Mount, but we take turns with the wards, okay? How that family is picked, I will give you my opinions later. In one year, you can help twelve families, in five years, sixty families, and so on. Know this does not solve everyone's problems.
That is the time, Ms. Hall, sorry, but do you have any, if you have documentation, you can hand them to our Assistant City Manager there to your immediate right, he'll make sure that we have. Thank you so much for your time, too. Next is Mr. Ernest Taylor, Jr.
Good evening, Mayor Protim, TJ Walker, to the other city councilmen, to the city manager, to our fire chief, and to our police chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been my will and pleasure to have the opportunity to come before you today to say to you about some of our conditions here in the city. But first of all, it was my will and pleasure to get the First Lady and Black Lady elected to the City Council, Ms. Hallinggate, I was her campaign manager. And I also had the opportunity to be the campaign manager for Reverend G.O. Thong, the first Black City Councilman. And I want to come today and say to you all, I am a product of the sanitation workers here in Rocky Mount. When they built the sanitation place down behind the OIC, my father helped build it. And after building it, he worked for the city over forty years, and he worked downtown. And being a little boy, he used to take me with him. So I grew up as a sanitation salesman, but during that time, because of the income, it was hard to survive. We needed shoes to go to school, and we were going to N.W.A. Harlem School. So my daddy bought one pair, my sister wear them one day, and she want me to wear them the next day. But I decided I wouldn't wear the shoes, I wanted to get a job and make some money. But however, when I look at the sanitation workers who keep Rocky Mount clean, I feel like I'm part of them. And the reason I say that, my daddy, who became Assistant Superintendent of the Sanitation Department, hired the First Lady in the sanitation department, and he also gave some insanity to the workers. When they finished their route, they got off and went home. That's a lot of things we can do. We don't see everything that these young men do when they come to your house and get your trash and keep it clean. And I know that there's supposed to have been a study done by the late city manager who was here before, but there are still things that have not been done for them. You know, they have to survive like we all have to survive. When you go home and you can take care of your family and you can feed your family, that's one thing, but when you go home and you cannot feed your family, that's another thing. And we're living in times now that we see the handwriting on the wall, we understand what's going on, and I'm saying to you all, when you did the budget, should have thought about those sanitation workers. Somehow, no, that they got left out in the equation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ms. Adrianne Copen.
Hey, tonight I want to talk in reference to item nine D on the agenda. It's about the current tax collection rate, and first off, that's great. Ninety-seven point four-four percent is an excellent tax collection rate. The state average is about ninety-six or ninety-seven, so that's, we've made a lot of progress over last year from ninety-five percent. But what I wanted to point out is, what that does is take all the amount of money that we are supposed to collect on, and how much do we actually get, is the total value. But I propose a better way of looking at that data, because if we took the collection rate of the parcels themselves, how many parcels, how many accounts do we bill, and how many of those do we collect? We could see a bigger demographic spread of where we are collecting and where we are not, and this could allow us to see, hey, if we put all this into a heat map, we can see where the distribution is of where we're collecting and where we're not collecting. And so even though some of these accounts that we aren't collecting, maybe they only owe a hundred dollars a year because it's a vacant lot, but if so many of them are clustered in neighborhoods, what we have to realize is that if they're behind on taxes, they're probably collecting grass and weed fines, they're probably having community code issues, they're probably below minimum housing code, and that is going to contribute to a lot of the blight and degeneration of our neighborhoods. So I propose we start looking at it as parcels and collection rate, and put this into some sort of a spreadsheet and a cluster map, or we can, a heat map, where we can see where we could focus, because we could have a lot more impact with like, the way, I know that we're starting to redo our tax foreclosures, and I'm really glad for that, but we could target where we want to have revitalization and economic development in areas by seeing where the problems really are, and we have all the data already. And I'll point out, some of you may remember, back in 2020, I spoke to this council about Villa Place, and that's the neighborhood that I live, and back then, out of a hundred-and-twenty-nine parcels, twenty-nine of them were delinquent in city taxes, fifteen of them were under minimum housing code, and together you had thirty-eight properties out of a hundred-and-twenty-nine, thirty percent in one neighborhood that were below minimum housing code or behind on taxes two years or more. And so we could have taken that data and focused on that area and really, really have a huge impact, and we can see it in the neighborhoods that really, really need our help. Instead of just a salt scattering around, we can have real impact block by block where it's really truly needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Arnie Jones.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Councilman, in turn, City Manager Walker. Like I say, I know you, I'm here, you know what I'm here about, Environmental Services, and the situation that we are in, I know what we do is not pretty, it's not a pretty job, and I appreciate what the Fire Department, as far as the lineman and, and the police, what they did with the, with the tornadoes and whatnot, have you. But sooner or later, that's going to fall down to us. We're going to have to wind up cleaning up and doing the things that we do. We don't mind doing it because that's our job, and we, you know, we do our job diligently, but we just want our fair shake on the whole situation that be, that, that is really going on. As Mr. Walker stated, you don't know what can happen tomorrow. God is good. God is good all the time, all day, every day. And we just looking, we praying, we praying and hoping that we can all work together, he said, we all work together as a team to make something happen for us. I appreciate the manager for coming down and speaking with us, that's a start. I appreciate, that is a start, getting somewhere. I feel like we're getting somewhere now, but we, everybody else get to fall in place. And like I say, that, that communication, coming to see us, coming in our house to talk to us in our house, as me coming here talking in y'all's house, you know? I have the utmost respect for y'all and what you do on a day-to-day basis, but I know somewhere in there is something for us, it's gotta be, it's gotta be, you know, but we got, we got to start somewhere. Like I say, in the past, you know, it's hard to let the past go, how we've been treated, but you know, we got, something got to be sweet on this side, somewhere down the line. We got families to feed, you know, it's hard, it's hard making it out here. Some of them are working two jobs, three jobs, they're making ends meet. As the lady said, some people don't even have a light on in the house, and that's a sad situation. We might be in that situation one day, but I'm just hoping each and every one of you still put that on the table for us, something for us, you know? We got to have, we got to have just anything, I mean, not anything, but you like I say, y'all got to come together and just work with us, you know? I put it out there, what we wanted, twenty-five percent, I put it out there, I think we deserve it of it, but somewhere down in the line, you got to find a common ground between you and me and my department that, that we can work on something. And I appreciate Mr. Arm Teller, as he spoke, that's the history of Rocky Mount, and that's a, that's a length of history, and, and, and that, that affects me as well. I want to know more about Rocky Mount and what the people that put theirself on the line for me to have what I got today. I want to leave a legacy behind me when I leave the city, that I did something for my coworkers and this city, and as well. And I appreciate you all listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, Mr. Cooper Blackwell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank the council and Public Works Department, first of all, first of all, for their time and effort spent in South Rocky Mount community conducting the evaluation on the speeding near Starling Way. Thank you for what y'all have done, you kept your word, you got the study done quickly, and we got back some recommendations for neighborhood improvement that'll be on the consent agenda today, so thank you all for that. I also want to like to acknowledge the families that have been affected by the tornado on Rocky Mount. I'm proud to see how collaborative and resilient our community has been, but I do want to make y'all aware that there's another storm that's brewing. We have a lot more to do. There's a whirlwind that's coming, and it's coming from the past. If we don't learn from the past, we're going to repeat it. Forty-five years ago, we've seen how the sanitation workers spoke out and demonstrated their discontent with our treatment of the people that work in the department. Today, the sanitation workers are still expressing discontent for how they are being treated. In the last few years, we've heard the news about staffing cuts in the department and broken equipment, and despite the deplorable conditions that the sanitation workers have had to deal with, they continue to persevere. Our government, our team has continued to persevere. They've also, through all of this, they've met our needs, but when are we going to meet their needs? When is the time going to come to where we persevere for them? We have, from sunrise to sundown, they've risked their safety and work-life balance to make sure our dead animals are picked up, the garbage is collected, sorted and properly disposed of, the sanitation team takes care of debris and yard waste that come from storms, and they make impact that's often overlooked but essential to our daily lives. They do it with pride, dignity, and humility, but what are we doing for them? What have we done, and what does it mean? Are we persevering through our deficits and struggles to meet their needs, or are we wrestling our lures because we have a plan that works for half of the team? Mr. Jones said he wants to talk face-to-face. Mr. Jones said they need living wages that touch everybody from entry level to management. Mr. Jones is telling us what's needed, and if you're not hearing them, you're not listening. If the sanitation workers say that they're not taking us seriously, and we need to have a different approach, the NAACP is going to listen to that. We've done marches, protests, and strikes before. It's acknowledging our history and, and the treatment of our people that makes us stay true to our commitment. In October 2018, forty-five years ago, you passed a resolution, and it took us forty years to pay the families from the last time we messed up. Let's not let it take as long this time.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. If you had something else left, you could give it to our Assistant City Manager. Thank you. Next, Ms. Maury Mendez.
Thank you for not making me sit down and get back up. First of all, I don't know who in the city started or how, my part of Weslin North, whatever, got put in, name got put in pot, but somebody a couple weeks ago, or a group, I don't know who, I didn't see them, came and picked up my litter in front of my shop, and I didn't have to do it because it was so hot. I kept thinking, okay, and my husband said, you can't go out there at night, you know, like somebody's going to run into me. But anyhow, I would just like to thank whoever was part of that. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Also, yeah, if they was sanitation workers, good for them. They hadn't picked up my Dempsey dumpster yet, but that's okay, I don't have a whole lot in there. But my big question is, how can I find out what happens, the results that people come up and bring before the City Council? Like that man whose little girls had the chickens, did they get to keep their chickens? And I'm going to tell you what, I got a couple of chickens and a rooster, and if that neighbor was ticked off about the chickens, let me give those people a rooster, and then she'll really have something to fuss about. And this might have something to do with, the young lady that came up said something about the taxes. A long time ago, it was brought up that there are a lot of people that weren't paying their taxes, and the city was cutting their grass, and they were going to charge them. Well, whatever happened to those people? Didn't somebody go after them? I think they should have. And my one big thing, too, a couple of months ago, I asked if somebody would check in to see if we could have a second recycling dumpster or bin near Gold Rock, near the food line? Honey, somebody forgot what I said, and they took away my one bin. Now we have nothing, and there used to be four bins out there on South, I guess that's still South Weslin, near their food line. They used to have four, now they got three. What, uh, 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 we need more, not less. So if somebody could tell me who I need to contact for that, I would like to know because I'll need to talk to them. Of course, I guess they don't care. And also, does everybody that's a taxpayer, that is a homeowner, do they get a trash and recycle bin, those small ones that you roll out? And the superintendent I have been trying to talk to for two weeks, I hope they're going to come, goodbye, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. If you have anything that you left off, you can see our Assistant City Manager for the copy. Thank you. Next, Ms. Teresa Austin-Stokes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here today to request that a pedestrian button crosswalk signal be placed at the intersection of East Grand Avenue and Raleigh Boulevard. We need one in the area. In fact, coming to the meeting, I saw a family trying to cross with a baby carriage. That's a very busy area, and we do have a lot of- That's a very busy area and we do have a lot of, uh, walking, uh, people in that area. And a button would be greatly appreciated. Also, kudos to the city of Rocky Mount for having the much-needed repairs done to the Denton Street Pool. It is such a pleasure to see all of the camps from all over the city, uh, as well as the daycares, the seniors and the community enjoy the newly renovated pool. So we wanna thank you, that was money well invested. I also want to speak on behalf of the Environmental Services workers. I do not understand why they have to come here each and every meeting to plead for a raise. It's one thing that you meet with them, but are you really hearing what they're saying? Or do you even care? And I hope that there are not plans to subcontract the trash collections because we definitely oppose that. And it would take money and jobs away from our citizens who work and live here in this city. You wanna support your families, they want to support theirs as well. I ask, please find the money and give them the respect as well as the much-needed raises that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Barden Winstead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Councilman. I'm Barden Winstead, President of Downtown Renaissance Incorporated, often referred to as DRI. DRI was formed almost forty years ago in nineteen eighty-five as a nonprofit corporation, formed to foster and promote the revitalization of downtown Rocky Mount. We have a board of twenty-three members, including the mayor, city manager, Chairman of the Redevelopment Commission, Steve Loach, who's here today. Also Sam Johnson, Secretary Treasurer of our organization. On Thursday, July the thirteenth, during our most recent board meeting, our board passed a resolution on the five-point storm water system repair. I'm not gonna read the entire resolution, but it is something that our board wishes the city of Rocky Mount to take a close look at. We are encouraging you to take action as soon as practical to repair and replace the storm water line so the threat to the structural stability of the affected buildings can be removed. Uh, and the rehabilitation of the Mayngoreum Building and other properties impacted by the storm water line can proceed without delay. Um, I'll leave this resolution, um, for everyone to, uh, take a look at. Also, very quickly, I just wanted to mention, Downtown Renaissance, very soon, we believe towards the end of August, work will begin on a brand-new mural on the wall, the corner of Marygold and Southeast Main Street, right beside the Thelonious Monk mural. We believe we have a terrific design concept, a very talented, experienced mural artist on board for this project, which will celebrate this theme of other talented, famous musicians from the Twin County region. Uh, and we're footing the bill for this. Uh, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Councilman Knight. Uh, for our city manager, uh, can you give us or Brad Carr can give us an update on the storm water lines? I know that, um, we have approved, uh, some of the plans and I think funded or has been in the budget to do some of the, um, storm water lines repair or relocate them. I just wanna know, uh, update on that.
Sure, Councilman, I will get that information and I'll send that to council.
Right, could he quickly, or you, uh, tell us is, uh, uh, if you know, or does Mr. Carr know that the amount of money that was put in the budget for that? Or do any other council member have any recollection of that? Brad is in there. Could you tell me, Mr. Carr? Or someone?
Councilman, we will get that information and we will send it to the council.
Okay, so it's in the plan, Mr. Carr? It's in the plan?
Mayor Protem, I will give the information to the council.
I understand that, Mr. Rogers, but when, uh, the council, not just me, wanna know a question and if you know the answer, I expect you to give a answer and not wait for a email two or three or four days or weeks later. Uh, since the history of Rocky Mount, every city manager that I've known, uh, when a question is asked, if the city manager didn't know and the department head is in the meeting, they would usually stand and at least acknowledge that it is a plan, that it ha- money has been approved and that it's being worked on. And I'm not doing that to slight you, but I'm doing that because at this particular time, um, the DRI, uh, asked a question and I recollect that we have done or have approved that. So, uh, that's the reason why I asked you. So in the future, I will hope, if you don't know the answer and if your department heads are sitting in this meeting, then they should give you the courtesy, or you give them the courtesy to speak to the issue. And so I'll wait for your email, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Next up, Ms. Antoinette Cutler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Antoinette Cutler, I'm at sixteen hundred Barnes Street. I come tonight to speak on behalf of the sanitation workers. I heard Mr. Walker and Mr. Jones speak so proudly about our city and I can do that as well. Very proud of what we have done since the storm came and destroyed our city. Everybody did hit and go into action very fast. And we should be grateful unto God that no lives was lost. That's even a greater thing, even though there are things and people, homes that has to be repaired. But not only do they need repair, our sanitation workers need repair. I sit in this council and I heard promises made that they would be taken care of and that they would keep their word. I think we need to keep our word. I think we need to make sure that just as they have served us, we need to make sure that they're served. They deserve it over forty-three years and I agree. If we have to protest, walk, march, let's get boots on the ground.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Nathalie O'Ree.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Manager and City Councilmembers.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Keith Rogers for meeting with the sanitation workers this week. Um, that gives me some consolation that the process is in the process. And the process will continue and we will see results and I thank you for that. Also, I would like to thank the city council for the support that you have provided to the Community Love Walk. And I'd like to thank the members and the volunteers who have gone out with the Love Walk, walking from ward to ward, looking at the needs of our citizens. And our last Saturday, not only looking, but working to help clean up following the tornado. And we also thank you for the support that you're giving the Love Walk Committee to have a citywide celebration on August nineteenth at Sunset Park, where everything would be free from one to six P M. to celebrate our love and to hopefully give out some, um, things for the children to go back to school. Um, these things we thank you for. Now, I have one item of concern for my utility bill. Um, in the summer months, I do not use gas, but there's a fee on the, on the two thousand twenty-two bill of fourteen dollars for gas and ninety-eight cents tax. I would like to know if you could reduce that or give us a break in the summertime on the gas bill if we're not using it? And I would certainly appreciate, and I'm, I'm pretty sure if the sanitation workers are being assessed these extra fees, they would appreciate a reduction in their utility bill also, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next is Jackie King. Ms. Jackie King.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I wanna say thank you to the city officials for what you've done for Battlebury, helping out since the storm. And thank you Reverend Jonah, Reuben, Andre for what you did, for what you're still doing for our people trying to get help. And I'm here today to advocate for the raise for the sanitation workers. I wanna bring up Alexandria Evans, but can't talk about Rocky Mount Sanitation without talking about Alexandria Evans. So on his behalf, from the grave, I know he would say, get the people raised. And on behalf of myself, I support giving them a raise. As a member of the NAACP, I support giving them a raise, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Sharon A. Evans.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sharon Evans from the Hillsdale Community. Uh, just wanna say thanks to, uh, the city for their support. Our community had a recognition of our elderly this past Saturday and we were, uh, supported by Parks and Recreation, Human Relations, Police and the Fire Department. We also had, uh, city officials to come and support us and we greatly appreciate that. Um, I have been asking for a list for the longest from the city about residents in my community. I need to know as far as, uh, we as an organization should be able to get a list from you all concerning the owners, the owner's address, our physical, uh, address in the, uh, our community, and we have not gotten that yet. I was told that whoever was doing that in the past, uh, is no longer working for the city and we need to get that done as soon as possible. Someone in your I T department should be able to do that and we have not gotten that. Um, also I've called publications as far as a, uh, we need publication in our bus terminal on Barnes Street and we have not received that as of yet. I haven't gotten the information concerning that. And the fourth thing is our sanitation workers. We were promised, oh, we gonna get, they gonna get a increase, more maybe than fifteen percent. And they have not received that yet. And we said, you wanna, wanna trust the people, wanna trust the council, that we need to be, um, we need to be good on our word. And that has not happened yet. And it shouldn't take three months as far as getting those things done. You know, you have people in place that can do those things, that's what they're paid for. And they, if you even give it something to them, let's say a month later, it should be retroacted back to July the first. Okay? So, uh, we appreciate what you're doing and what you're gonna do in the future and we pray that you do the right thing, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Knight.
When could Ms. Evans, um, get that information that she requested?
You said when?
Yes.
I requested, um, every bit of a year plus.
So, so Mayor Protem, can you make sure that that information gets to Ms. Evans and?
This is owner and owner addresses of?
It's a list of things I've given to the department head as far as the items of the fields that I need.
Gotcha.
Because, well, we have a lot of rented property in our community and we requested speed, uh, cushions. And the rules with the city is that you have to have owners to actually sign for the speed cushions. You can't get the renters to sign. And so I had to go through the process and try to find out who the owners.
Gotcha, and what street, Barnes Street, you said, Barnes Street?
Yeah, we've already been approved for our speed cushions. But what happened is that we need to know as far as the resident or the people that own the property in our community. And we don't have that.
And what, what street was that?
What streets want that?
That you want the owners?
For the whole community, Hillsdale Community.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Do you know who you gave that to or do you have the list that a year is a long time? So if you have the list, it might be helpful to submit it again a year and not getting what you need.
I'll call him again.
Okay.
All right.
Is that who, is that who?
Was that community code?
No.
So should that come to a higher source, that's my question?
I just wanna make sure that you all are aware that I've requested and that person will get back with us.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm unclear, wait a minute.
Council, go ahead.
I'm unclear, Ms. Evans, can you give it to Mr. Daniels and then he can work with the manager?
Okay, I'll send that, uh, email to you as far as the fields that I've requested.
And Mayor Protem, is that a policy that we adopted, it has to be the owners and not the renters to get a speed cushion?
Yeah, the speed cushions requirement asks that you have the owners, not the renters, sign for the petition to have a speed cushion. That is something that the engineering department has requested from us.
And I'm asking, is that a policy that the council have adopted?
We need to check that because, uh, when I did for Starling Way, I just got residents.
Correct, and so.
I've never heard that.
But the point, we're, we're, um, have been trying to get those speed cushions for a very long time. And Mr. Jones can attest to it in our community meetings. And also in Flagmarsh, are requesting speed cushions. And, um, Rosewood Avenue, um, as you go into by Saint Stevenson Church, uh, it's a lot of speeding. But it seemed like it's a hindrance or a barrier when you don't get the people that live in the area, they have to own the properties. But, uh, when we put them on Ravenwood, it was just a petition. So has the policy or the ordinance changed?
I don't know if it's changed, I, I know what, the engineering department required of us.
I was referring to a staff and that's your area, Mr. Carr, is that correct?
So it was not communicated in Edgemont. The, the staff that came just said, you know, we need this petition completed. The, the city requested support from the folks who attended those meetings. And then my understanding is that it got done because today we have speed bumps now, it's cushions, not bumps, cushions. And it's made a really big difference, so.
So are you, are you saying that Hillsdale is being slighted of speed cushion? Because we have been told something totally different. And I, if, if staff can get us what the policy is, uh, to every council member. So when our constituent asked us, we can get them the correct information, whether it's just the residents or is, if it had to be owners or renters, it's, it's not clear. And it making it seem as if, uh, when certain people or council member asks for certain things, it's being slowed down or not done at all. And so it needs to be fixed, we need to change the policy on speed cushion and we need to do that as a whole. And if you can, Mayor Protem, since I have to direct it to you now, uh, could you get that policy to the council?
No problem, thank you, Councilman Knight. Any other questions? Here are no questions, thank you again for, uh, all of your public, um, assistance.
I have a comment. Mayor Protem and council, uh, members, and you all had to excuse my dread, uh, my, my dress attire. Uh, I just got in, uh, from my eighty-six Conclave of Capa Alphasai that was in Tampa, Florida. My flight was council on last night, so you got the natural and you got who I am. No suit, no tie. Uh, and I did not want it to be said again that I was afraid to be in a council men- a council meeting. I'm never afraid to be in a council member, be in a council meeting or to address anyone that comes to this council, whether you come from Chicago. or to address anyone that comes to this council, whether you come from Chicago, New York, or Charlotte. I'm here. I'm the same as from two thousand three to this, to twenty twenty-three. I don't change. Unbossed and unballed. And I'm applaud that we had people to come from fifteen towns in city, all the way to Rocky Mountain. Talk about Rocky Mountain and no one from the mayor or the council members did not defend this city. We are elected to defend and stand for this city. And those malicious lies that are being told in the public square should have been corrected in the public square. And tell those folks to go back where you came from and address your Charlotte problems and crime rate. Don't come to Rocky Mountain with that mess. So council member Blackwell was not here and I was not here because it was an O I C business to help people to help themselves. But we are unafraid. I just want to get that straight. But uh, I want to say again unequivocally that I support the fifteen percent increase for the sanitation workers. And the six percent for those employees who did not receive anything from the comp study. And if they receive more than five percent from the comp study, those employees would be excluded. And so again, we have heard overwhelmingly support from our citizens and again from our sanitation department. So we are asking that we look at that for our sanitation and parts uh, public works and Parks and Rec. And a six percent, because I'm hearing it from employees from all across departments, that they are not happy that they did not receive anything from the comp study. It does not take ninety days. And take ninety days for thirty-six percent increase, and it shouldn't take ninety days to figure this out. So I'm asking this council again, and I'm addressing the council. Uh, when are we going to do right? Especially by all our employees and especially our sanitation workers. So again, I support that. I support giving our employees a cola raise, a cost of living adjustment raise. And that's what most of the cities have done if we attended the North Carolina League of Municipality Conference. So we probably hear it again in August. So I'm just, I'm just pleading with our council members uh, to please take that into consideration. And let's be expeditious about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. And thank you again to all the public that came to make your public comments and public petitions uh, September. Of course, we don't have our August committee the whole, but September, we already have scheduled uh, a pay update for us council to uh, have discussion about that in our committee of the whole meeting. So we're looking forward to that um, second Monday in September. There are no other comments or remarks. Moving on now to our consent agenda, item nine. The recommended action of our consent agenda is to approve consent agenda inclusive of approval of award of duty badge and purchase upside on, approve tax releases, adopt ordinance and resolution, approve agreement and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and finance director to execute same on behalf of the city and award bid as recommended. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute bid contracts on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Councilman John is a second. Second made by Councilman Jabaris Walker. All, any questions? Hearing nine, all in favor, let it be known by I. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, one, it's new business Down East Viking funding. Uh, Councilman Knight, I'll turn the floor over to you now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'm, it had come to my attention uh, from a constituents that the Down East Classic uh, which we have had the last twenty, twenty-five years. It's a huge event um, that comes to Rocky Mountain uh, has been uh, the money they received from the Nash County Tourism, their dollars have been cut. And Nash County Tourism said they don't, they do not receive uh, anything uh, from the Down East Classic coming to Rocky Mountain. The lowest years of participation have been six thousand. And at the highest peak, it has been over ten thousand people coming into our community, sleeping in our hotel, uh, hotels and uh, buying gas and food. And so I'm saying that uh, and also uh, on this council, I'm not calling the name, uh, that it was stated that the Down East Classic is just a bit local cookout uh, for people in Rocky Mountain. But just as the Down East Classic, it's important to Rocky Mountain, just like U N C. When they play Duke, it's important in that area. And also when N C State played Carolina. We have had some phenomenal H, uh, historical black university and college to come in this area to this Down East Classic. And I'm asking that this council uh, that we would approve of fifteen thousand dollars uh, to the Down East Classic event. Uh, I ask for the uh, economic impact of the Down East Classic. And I also ask for the uh, the amount of money that the North Carolina Tourism have budgeted for other organization and if those organization have been cut as well. And if they have not, then we have a problem that needs to be addressed uh, to our Nash County Commissioner. I believe he chairs that, uh, Robbie Davis, who has uh, reduced the funding for the Down East Classic. We all know that that's very, very, very important to this community. And I would like that for this council to act upon that uh, expeditiously because we do not have a meeting in August. Uh, uh, where we do, the first meeting in August is, is, is council. And our next meeting would be August the twenty-eighth, which is at four o'clock. And then the Down East Classic would be September the ninth. So I just wanted to make sure that we had the information, that we have plenty of time uh, to consider uh, restoring that funding to that event in Rocky Mountain.
We have a, is it a motion, uh, Councilman Knight?
There is a motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to um, approve of or fine fifteen thousand dollars for the Down East Viking Classic funding. Uh, I think this is um, an addition to what we already do to take place of the uh, Nash County Tourism loss. Uh, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second made. Uh, any questions?
No questions.
Councilman Daltch and Councilman Harris and Councilman Knight.
Um.
Councilman Walker.
Certainly support the, the money and just to give, I, I want to say um, Mary Sandy Robertson is looking into this. In fact, I think he's been talking back and forth with uh, the travel and tourism. I'm pretty sure he has. And I know in, in Councilman Knight, your request, I actually made that request uh, and received some information recently, and I'll provide that to the entire city council. Based on the budget and the um, money's expended. I had a, uh, I sent that request to uh, Commissioner Davis and I, I received where the money was spent. Because I think ninety-nine point nine percent of all that T D A money is derived out of the city of Rocky Mountain. And my concern is that money being spent in the city of Rocky Mountain. And um, and I, it, it is, it is not. And I think we have to have that discussion. Three percent, this was back, and I'm not sure when the resolution was passed, but I've got the legislation in front of me. It was uh, looks like uh, two thousand one House Bill five eighty-three. So this is appropriate time that this is coming up because I plan on having that discussion. And I think I probably, it sounds like I have support from the city council to have more discussions with Nash County regarding the expenditures, where that, that money is going. Because it, because it needs to benefit our hotels and where all that money is derived and, and what it's for of bringing tourism to Rocky Mountain, such as the Down East Viking Classic. So I, I say all this because I think, I think it's a conversation, maybe we could, I, I, I would like to see this conversation in committee whole. If we could do that, Mayor Protem. And we could all get together with the information instead of coming up here and, and each one of us coming with separate information. I think it would be appropriate. But um, I agree with you, Councilman Knight, that we need to look into this. I have been looking into it and I do think Sandy, Mayor Sandy Robertson has had that discussion. He's concerned with the money that was reduced um, and, and working on that. So I would, I would be voting in support, but I would like to know where we could get the money from, where it's going to come from. You know, I, I think we probably have the money somewhere, but I, obviously it looks like um, Mr. Hunter's not here, so we, we.
And Committee of the Whole would be a great, great place to have that further conversation, uh, Councilman Daltch. Uh, but for this particular item, um, the game will be over before our, our next committee of the whole. And so we want to uh, make sure that we, if Councilman Knight's uh, motion is to address the game, which is going to be before our next committee of the whole. But thank you for your comments. Uh, Councilman Harris and then Councilman Jabaris Walker.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. I was, I was going to ask the same question as Councilman Mun Daltch. How much of the money generated in the city limits of Rocky Mountain, Nash Side that goes to the travel tourism authority? How much of that comes back to benefit? And that's a big question. And we can certainly address it at the committee of whole and hopefully we can get some answers uh, before our next committee of whole in September.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Councilman Walker and Councilman Blackwell.
Just know I um, had a conversation with the A D from Elizabeth City. I, I still haven't received the email of what um, he was requesting. But like Councilman Knight said, I definitely support the, giving them the fifteen thousand dollars before the game so we can. Because that's big to the history of Rocky Mountain, especially growing up in it. It's huge. So uh, anything we can do for city council, uh, keep it here in Rocky Mountain. Let's make it happen.
Thank you, Councilman Walker. Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, I, I have a bigger concern. I mean, I'm a hundred percent in favor of filling that gap. Well, we have a deficit of respect from Nash County related to Rocky Mountain. And it's pervasive through almost every place where the government has an opportunity to intervene and oftentimes disrupt uh, moving forward. Uh, the reason why Nash County has the opportunity to make decisions about where those dollars go that are generated by visitors who come here from everywhere in America and the world uh, to support activities in Rocky Mountain is because those dollars are centered around hotels. And when there are no hotels in Edgecombe, Rocky Mountain, we are held hostage to the largesse. We're held hostage to the consideration of people who frankly do not care about the development of all of Rocky Mountain. The root cause is no hotels in downtown Rocky Mountain. So my questions and concerns have more to do with the priority of this council and this management and finding ways to create opportunities for hotel developers to invest with us. Build our own facilities in downtown and in Edgecombe, Rocky Mountain, while we continue to work with and support other entities. I never was good at taking head and hand and shuffling and singing. I don't do a good job with that. I'd rather make my own money. And um, anytime someone can arbitrarily make a decision and cut an allocation that frankly was not earned by the people who cut it, it was invested by the people who come to this community, love Rocky Mountain and want to see good things happen here and have a great time here. And I'm not saying that's reflective of the people who own the hotels because they don't make the decisions all the time. They're here to see their businesses succeed and they're succeeding. Have you ever tried to get a hotel in Rocky Mountain on any weekend? But especially Down East Viking Classic weekend. So whether it's a cookout or cook off or ain't nobody cooking, what we know is happening is money is being spent and it's green. And so if we want to fix the real issue, I appreciate whatever deliberations and conversations are being had. But the way to fix it is to develop hotels, open the door for anybody who wants to develop hotels in Edgecombe, Rocky Mountain. The city needs to be open for business. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. Uh, thank everyone for your comment. Councilman Knight.
I was going to say, um, Councilman Daltch, I know you said you had some conversations with some people. And sometimes those back room conversations don't work and they're not working. And we continue to allow uh, Nash County Chairman to do everything that he can do possible to uh, slight Rocky Mountain. And when somebody on this council, I'm not going to call their name, but they don't look like me, say there's a big cookout for locals, I am very offended. So whatever conversation they have, it ain't no real conversation. So it's time for us to stop putting on these shenanigans and playing these charades. That's all I'm gonna say on that.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Any other comments at this? Councilman Daltch.
I, I think the discussion really needs to be around, do we need to ask the legislature, allow us to uh, institute our own occupancy tax at the hotels that um, are within the city limits of, of Rocky Mountain? I think that's where part of that discussion needs to be. And I'm not so sure what the reference has been recently, but it, obviously, obviously there's only three of us up here that it could be pointed at and I, I'm very unclear and I'm sure you'll, sure you'll let me know.
You know, you didn't say it, then don't worry about it. So that clues you, so it's only, ain't but two left. Okay. All right. Let's adjourn this meeting before I.
I think, I, I, I think we need to um, work, I think we need to work as a team and have a consensus where we come together. And um, so um, I call the question.
Question's called, motion has been made. Uh, is there a second? Second about Councilman Joyner. All in favor, let it be known by saying.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Also again, like I said, September, uh, committee of the whole, we will have that pay update from our staff. And I also want us to keep in mind um, our part-time employees that we have with the city as well. I'm not sure how they fit into uh, historically what has happened here. Um, but um, uh, we'll also be taking a look at that and to make aware of our colleagues here. Um, and I'm sure, I hope we all know, but we have recreational facilities without A C. And um, one of them primarily being our senior center. And I know that uh, we will be seeing some additions to Booker T Washington Gym um, uh, within our C I P plan. But if we could uh, look further at our recreation centers that don't have uh, A C to make sure that we are properly planning to put uh, those finances in the right place during our budget. It'd be greatly appreciated for our staff and for our community that utilizes those recreation centers. But uh, if you haven't, just take a trip to our recreation centers and uh, you, you'll feel exactly what, what I'm saying. Councilman Joyner and Councilman Knight.
Yes, uh, we're thankful for the good relationship we have with Edgecombe County. But in our um, uh, council hall, can we also include Edgecombe County in that?
Edgecombe County Commissioners? Tourism. Thank you. Councilman Knight.
I have one announcement.
Yes sir.
Sensational Creation presents the family and friends back to school celebration. July the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, one P M. to six at Oldwood Shopping Center. And it's a, I think it's a back to school giveaway. And the person um, that, that has been doing this, inviting all of the elected officials, United Way, O I C, and um, all the council persons of each ward to please stop by and say hello. So that's on the twenty-ninth at Oldwood Shopping Center. Sensational Creations presents family and friends back to school celebration. Just want to support her in that way, uh, announcing that publicly. Just want to support her in that way, uh, announcing that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. I share where that was the same time as our, uh, B M O conference, but we would try to, to stop by if we could. Any other questions?
Have any storage units that can make it available to our residents, so they're trying to store their furnishes and other things so they can get back in the home? Please let us know.
Councilman Daughtry.
Are we going to closed session?
Yeah, that's.
We are? Okay, I wasn't sure if that was canceled.
Any other questions, comments, remarks? Hearing none, uh, to our public, thank you again for being here with us in our city council meeting today, which is, uh, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for all of your concerns. Thank you for your comments, and we look forward to having you at our next meeting. Uh, stay safe and be safe. At this time, we have a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
And it is for attorney-client and economic development. Motion was made by Councilman Joiner, seconded by, uh, Councilman Blackwell. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're now in the closed session.